Good evening, everyone. The director, Jennifer Phillips-Simpson, attorney of the GSC, I am here to tell you how the Asbury Partners, as well as its affiliate, even by our holding title, stake. I recognize it's a massive dollar, while with its affiliate, the owners of property located Block 4306, Lot 108, which I now want to describe where that is in the state. We are under contract to sell this property to a private, 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 and we're appearing to have approval this evening to utilize the planning board and issue to prove this as a developer in the world. For the construction of forty-five townhomes. You were informed of TRC and the call. And as you'll see in the presentation this evening, the TRC comments about the architectural elevations, the design of the exterior of the building. And we were retired the last few months to refine those plans. We see through account of the paid professional comments, the actual comments, to come with the time and things. Please be able to serve your right. So we got started, and I'm going to have a very convenient start, like, go through four definitions and deal with all the projects. We don't have a right, but I can just give you a talk about the latest evening. All purely our state engineers here as well. Not that I don't have any, unless there's specific questions on engineering, if you're trying to back down cover, you know, definitions. And that, and you walk us through, uh, site location and what is proposed?
Sure. The first image we're looking at, pardon me, is a, an image that I based off of a Google Maps. And you can see here the site in, in yellow. It is bounded on the north by Eighth Avenue, on the west by Webb Street, on the east by Kingsley, and on the south by Seventh Avenue. The lot area is one point eight three acres. So that, that tells you where the property is. And basically, it's in the, the northeastern part of the city. And here, on the top part of the image, is Deal Lake. So that'll give us the location of the property. I'll move to some drawings. Just as a general overview of the project, and Jen had mentioned some of this, but we're proposing forty-five residential units. Each one of these boxes represents a unit in six building clusters. So one, two, three, four, five, six. And for orientation, this is Kingsley, this is Seventh, this is Eighth, and this is Webb. So east is over here on the right part of, of the image. Some important things I think we should, the council should note is that we've made many revisions based on TRC and planning staff comments. One of the important factors, one important items that we think in terms of the design is that all the parking is accessed internally. So this is our site plan. You'll notice that the entrance and exit vehicular is off of Webb, Webb Street. All the parking for these townhomes would be, in essence, at the back of the townhomes. So the main entries to the townhomes on five of the six clusters is along street frontage. So these townhomes, they're all the entries, and I've got three D images to, to show you in more detail. But all the entries here are off of Eighth Avenue. All the entries for these units, townhome units, are along Kingsley. And the same applies for this section along Seventh Avenue. With the exception of the five units that are in the center of the property. So these, obviously, because they don't, they're not on, there's no street frontage, will be, will be entered from this access road. In terms of the units themselves, we've got four-story clusters and three-story clusters. And I'll zoom in a bit so it's easier for everyone to see. Let's just move this over a bit. Okay. So for reference, using the same site plan, of course, these are all four-story townhomes, these are four-story townhomes, these are four-story townhomes, and these are four. These are, as well, the only sections that are three is this one along Webb Street. The widths average, or they range between sixteen feet and twenty feet. The average unit sizes are between, I think the number was sixteen hundred approximately and twenty, sixteen fifty and twenty-four sixty. So there's a range of unit sizes, too, within these townhomes. They're not all just these giant townhomes that we often see and, and are, are kind of monogrammatic in terms of the actual layouts. So we've got a variety of upsize within these units. The end units are slightly bigger, but in, in general, what we're looking at here is a, is a townhome design in terms of a site plan that has taken advantage of the four streets. The vast majority of the entrances to these units are off the streets, which is, of course, something that, that this council, as well as planning staff and, and TRC would like, and it's good planning. We have brought all the parking to be accessed from, within the site, where all the parking is accessed internally, which limits, of course, the amount of curb cuts that we would need. So in terms of a site plan, I think this is a very, very good solution. Some revisions that were made based on TRC comments and recommendations, as well as planning staff comments or recommendations. And I'll get into them a bit, some of them that works has to do with colors and materials. But in terms of the site plan, one revision that was made, and we think it's a very good one, is that this cluster of homes, these five homes, were initially, the main entry was off of this internal road. The suggestion was made that we flip it so that now the entries are facing east, which is also happens to be where we have this, um, this, this wide pedestrian entry to the side as well. So I should mention, as part of the site plan, of course, this is Kingsley, Ocean Avenue's further east. We have a main pedestrian entry, a connection to Kingsley Street right here. So the comment was, the suggestion was that we, that we flip the design here. So now the entries are along, along this section, and you have a better view of this small few quarters of these. So that was, I think, a very good suggestion that we have implemented. I'll move along, understanding time is limited. This is the second sheet, or third sheet, but the second sheet of drawings that we got for tonight's presentation. And what we're looking at here is our original submission. And there's a reason why we're showing you these, because we think that the evolution of the design has come so far that you'll see these relative to the new ones, and I think you'll hopefully be very happy. But initially, we had colors that were probably a, a bit more contemporary in nature and, and perhaps could have been softened, and that was some of the suggestions, which, so we did do that. And there were other suggestions that, that the, um, TRC had. For example, the, the comment, well, one of the comments was that we should, we should try architecturally to make the end units a bit more prominent in terms of verticality and act as a good bookend to these townhomes. So this was our original idea on how to accomplish that. We have since evolved to the next image. So here, it's the same perspective, but you'll see that the color palette has changed. So we use, and I know you've heard the term many times, coastal colors, but the colors here in terms of, of inspiration are colors inspired by the sea, inspired by, um, the beach, inspired by the sky. I've got the actual names of all the colors we're choosing, but you'll see the difference. It, it, it looks less harsh, we think. It looks softer, and we think that it, it makes much more sense given our proximity to the actual Atlantic Ocean. There was also a suggestion that we simplify materials, and we've done that. But in terms of materials, we're proposing the vast majority of the façades to be covered in fiber cement boards, which are meant, in this case, to look like wood, but much more, um, it can handle the weather that the coast brings much, much, um, much better than wood, wood. And in terms of the specific designs, we've got horizontal lap siding. These are all combinations to kind of make a particular aesthetic. We've got vertical board battens, the, the horizontal siding, as well as some areas of, of actual wood shakes, meant to look like wood shakes. So we think the materials make sense, given our, our location, given the history of, of Asbury Park. And how we accomplished, we think, the end units being more prominent is we have brought up a section of the floor, of the floor plate, five stories, small section which allows access for these two decks. Those decks have, are now covered by pergolas. So you'll see that the corners here are, have, are accented by pergolas. It's a nice, we think, soft way of having the termination of the building at the corners, and always during the day, daytime allows for very interesting shadows. So we think that was successful. This view is along Kingsley, but you'll see these are all the entries to the building cluster along Kingsley. You'll, you'll notice that they're raised a pile, but we're required to do that, given our location and proximity to the, well, within the flood zone. So we're, pardon, required to lift all these floors up. We've done that, but yet still have separate entries all along Kingsley. So we think that was successful. Other changes, well, I'll go through the other, the other drawings, you'll, you'll see. But we, we, we talked about the colors, we changed that, I described that. There were small changes that they wanted, we extended a foundation section here just to allow for more screening of the cars behind it. But I think this image specifically tells the story of what we're proposing. I've got many others, we can go through them quickly. This is that same perspective, uh, we think of a look at nighttime. Brian, the landscape architect, will talk about all the, the, the proposals in terms of landscaping. Another view, this is, uh, along Kingsley, um, looking west. You can see the same idea, we've got the pergolas at the corners, which we think kind of accent those edges. Same perspective, evening. Straight-on view along Kingsley, highlighting the entries to each of the townhomes. You'll see that each one has its own stair entry with landscaping surrounds. And the same perspective at nighttime. Theme continues along Eighth Avenue. And finally, that Eighth Avenue view in the evening. Some more information that we, that we should, I should be talking about, let you know. We're required to have sixty-seven half parking spaces. We're proposing one hundred and fourteen. So I think that is a good thing. In terms of the heights that I had talked about, there's a combination of four-story and three-stories. Those four-story structures are forty-six feet in height. The three-story structures are thirty-eight feet in height. And let me confirm that I've gotten all the revisions to let you know that, so it's materials. Yeah, so I think that's, that's really it in terms of, of what we wanted to show tonight and, and the evolution of the project. We think that we've, um, captured all the comments and suggestions that both TRC and planning staff had with this revised, evolved design. And I'm happy to answer any particular questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have questions. I tried to ask a piece of that, but I wasn't able to. How many street parking spots because of perp class for the city rooms?
I'll defer that to Bob, our civil engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, you can answer that for sure.
Three.
Oh, pardon me, mayor, but the answer is three.
Great, okay. And please pay for Pete, Bob, also, so if there are some problems. So you got three stories or four stories? Or all the threes is in, all the fours is in, or somewhere the square footage is?
Yes, they, so they're, in each case, the three-story buildings are on the ends twenty feet wide, the internal ones are sixteen feet wide. That applies as well to the four-story. So the widest of the buildings, which are at the end, structures are twenty feet wide and sixteen feet for everything else that's internal. In terms of areas, they range from the, the three-story buildings that are narrow, so those would be the smallest, at sixteen hundred fifty square feet, and the largest being the four-story, which are at the, at the wider dimension of twenty feet, of two thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. So there's a range between sixteen fifty and twenty-four sixty.
I think that's another question for you, but I think there's two other ones that were not major. Probably Bob, unless you want to ask him that.
If you want to ask him that, right, I have Bob.
Okay, so say this goes forward, goes to the planning board. What's the projected timeframe for this to be started and finished?
Um, I'm looking at the, uh, the applicant, uh, so I would say...
What's the, what's the, what's the applicant's? Is one of the other questions, I'll get a call.
Okay, uh, this is, you can come up with the planning board. Staging all onsite and as far as a trailer or, uh, something, sales trailer onsite or someplace else?
On site.
The two-year build cycle, wait, ten, two-year build cycle, sales trailer onsite.
So the build cycle should be about two years, and the sales trailer should kind of be onsite here.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you for that.
Can I ask about sustainability and green measures that would be making part of this different project?
Yeah, so what we generally do in projects like this, we'll have LED lighting, there are low VOC paints. I don't think there's a green roof yet proposed as part of this, or most of the roofs here really don't, you cannot get a green roof on. There is, there's water retention.
Yes.
Water retention, so I think that's, uh, obviously a, a big one. And, and most of the coal requirements these days take us to such a level that these buildings are very efficient.
So we can't ask for LEED certification, but we'd like to get as close to that as possible.
Understood, and I, I recognize that most city councils and planning zoning boards don't want actual LEED certification, because that happens post, post-CFO. But we can provide a checklist from LEED to show you all the points that we will hit. Great.
So how many bedrooms?
Some of the units are three bedrooms and some are four. Again, depending on the size, as I described before.
Thank you. Let's ask Brian, let's just talk a little bit about the next evening, if there are more questions or not.
Thank you. I may sit here to, uh, help run the computer.
I can stand.
Okay, then I'll get to your image. There you go. So this is a color-rendered version of our landscape plan. Uh, as you can see, the, we're providing plantings in front and behind all of the units. All the plants that are chosen are known to be salt tolerant and will grow in this area. I've included some images of the standard plants that everyone's familiar with. Most are native, there are some introduced species, such as knocked-out roses, hydrangeas, and hostas, that aren't necessarily native, but they are traditional shore plants. And they're certainly what people expect to see when they come down to the shore. And let's face it, there's only a handful of plants that grow in the area, so anything we can put in that actually adds a little color and a little pop, that'll live, uh, is a good thing. We did make some changes from the initial plan. The big one, we've already spoken about, was spinning that center building by ninety degrees. What that did is it allowed the front of that building, as you're walking down Kingsley Street and you look down the view corridor where we have the walkway, you'll be looking at the front of the building and not the garages for those buildings. We've also included a walkway and a little bit nicer entrance right at, right where the crosswalk would come across the driveway and hit that building, that center unit. So there were enhancements in that area. And based on the initial planting scheme, we made one big change. We originally had a lot of lirality that was specified as a ground cover, just a very low grass-like ground cover. The suggestion was made to move, swap that out for various sedges that are native, and would serve the purpose, same purpose and have a similar look. Uh, so we did make that change. And as I was looking at it, uh, the areas that were between the driveways seemed a little bland to me, they were all the same. So I introduced a little bit more variety into the planting strips between the driveways, again, just for visual appeal. But that's the summary of the landscape. There are trees all around, both on the sidewalk, which would be part of the, uh, the overall development plan and not part of this project, that's why the street trees are screened out on this. That's where they show up as part of the redevelopment plan. But the, so all the street scape improvements would be part of the, uh, master development. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer.
No, I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So following this, we will be presenting a subsequent developer agreement to, for trying to reveal, in the same form as usual. We're going to come back to the council for, for the approval. And assuming we get that early, we still have the planning board, but we may not have the opportunity for all carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
There's nothing people asked to say or, or comment question.
Do what?
We will speak here during the...
Yeah, because you know how we do it.
We're now on to matters from City Council, Councilmember Buzz Anderson.
Yes, I have something to say. First of all, good evening to everyone. And I know that you are speaking not only for myself, but I believe also for Deputy Mayor and also another, who are just our new city manager, Lee, our eighth in our term. We are absolutely delighted to have our mayor back with us. We have missed you. You look fabulous. Yeah, I've missed you, we've all missed you, and so just welcome back.
Thank you, I'm sure two weeks from now you're going to say, what the hell are you talking about?
Probably soon, but right now we're not.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Councilmember Chad.
So I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, councilwoman Clayton and I will be hosting Coffee with the Councilperson, uh, tomorrow at ten o'clock, and we have you a long morning. If anyone would like to come out and share any thoughts or concerns or ideas, come on out, we're buying coffee, so we look to see you. Councilmember, please come out and spend the morning with us. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Uh, yeah, we have a, a event going on this weekend at Berkeley Made or Sold in Asbury Park, which are products that have been made or are being sold in Asbury Park. A surprising number of products are made in Asbury Park. It's a free event, there'll be tables for you to look at products, buy products, and talk to folks. So that is at the Berkeley, and so does Qualify Saturday, Qualify Saturday, it's in there.
Mayor Morgan. Matters from the city manager.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. We're now onto public participation, and I'd motion open meetings to the public.
Moving.
Thank you. All in favor? Public participation portion is now open. Uh, any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Gregory Uzi. I am a resident at three hundred Emery Street. I'm on the third floor. We live, um, two floors above the Asbury L House. We've been having trouble sleeping, and we've been calling the police department, making complaints. I'm not sure if the L House is being fined for these complaints or not, I don't have any way of knowing, but I know that the complaints about the noise ordinance seem to be falling upon deaf ears, so I'm here to speak about that. See if there's any way that that can be helped.
Is that it?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you, uh, continue, please, call the shift manager. If you get no results, let, uh, city manager know, uh, as soon as possible. When we get these complaints, we do take them seriously, uh, and restrictions have been placed on various bars because they've been not being nice statements, so...
Yeah, we have shaking floors, things falling off walls, or different people in the building, serious concerns, so sorry about that.
And there's power numbers, so I'm sure that you're calling, but you can get your neighbors to call and everything else. The greasy, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and like, we can't do anything until we get those complaints, and then there's a liquid committee made up of two councilpersons, which, like, they sit down with the police department, they go over the complaints, and then, you know, they suggest when their licenses are up in June, that restrictions be placed on these establishments. So again, the only thing we can do is like, get the complaints and then move on them. So if we don't get the complaints, we're like, kind of like useless to you, so anything you can do to help us get your neighbors to complain...
We'll track them.
Helps you immensely.
We'll track them, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, hopefully it gets better.
Deputy Mayor Quinn and I meet with the police every month to talk about different license establishments and, and issues, and we need to see the number of calls that come in, and we're going to have those conversations with the owners.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Cazore, uh, through the five Eighth Avenue. Apologies if I missed this, came late, but I saw on the agenda packet with, uh, regards to the Delta Townhouse, uh, development, that there's a pilot proposed. Just trying to get more information on what that is, what's the approval process, why it's being proposed.
Question, question, a little policy again?
Yes.
Yes, is the Waterfront Development, go back to two thousand and two, says paint development for sale, and the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan automatically gets a pot. Now, as far as what the numbers are, it's way too early to say, because we have to look into pro forma and everything else, and it's based on that. And then if they say, hey, these units are going to sell for five hundred thousand, and they sell for eight or nine hundred thousand, we automatically adjust the rate up. So, like, you know, as much as we get, like, a good estimate, if they sell it for more, the city gets more money, but they, by law, have to get a policy.
Got it, so the city has no way or say in that?
In the Waterfront Redevelopment Zone, none whatsoever, for any project that's for sale.
And no affordable housing requirement or anything, right?
No, but, uh, the original agreement had a stipulation there, when they hit certain levels, I'm going to, I'm going to be close on this, but, you know, don't quote me, but we get the information. The first year, they paid it the city a million dollars. When they had three hundred units, they had to pay the city a million dollars. When they had six hundred units, they had to pay the city a million dollars. With the project at Block four oh oh one, the two hundred some, uh, units there, that's nine hundred units, and they paid the city another million dollars. Now, that money, not always in the past is going to affordable housing, but we've always put it to affordable housing. So that's what they have to do with affordable housing.
Got it, thanks. Just one more, uh, specific design questions, probably best answered with the planning board beginning, is it correct?
Well, you, you can ask, exactly, they stay to answer any questions that are here, so if you have it, and you can also ask the planning board, it's, it will be, you know, where...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just, just real quick, I mean, I noticed some steps to the, to the units drop kind of right on the sidewalk, I just want to make sure that, you know, setback requirements and, um, those type of things are, are being complied with.
You want to answer that now?
Sure, we, we do comply with setback requirements, and I guess our stairs, in some cases, do go to the front sidewalk, but we do meet the requirements.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow with my other questions in the planning board.
Thank you.
Hi, Holly Shulda, eleven hundred Fifth Avenue. Um, speaking on behalf of, um, Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition and myself, and wondering regarding the, um, city's resolution, the complete streets resolution that we have, and the complete streets checklist, just kind of piggybacks on what Mike was asking about, uh, about frontages, about setbacks. Are you aware of the complete streets checklist, and that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the checklist does require that new construction allows for a certain amount of pedestrian walkway, that, um, not just setback, but walkway space, as well as possible bug bouts and crosswalks and any other treatments on the street that would enhance walking and bicycling? And make it safer?
Want to answer all the questions, just to set up here, so I apologize. In Waterfront Redevelopment Area, there is a board, it's on the if-shark report, that was adopted by ordinance, that has very detailed specifications about all the streets, and then like out, and how they're required to be built. And as part of this project, the streets around this block will be built out in accordance with the, the engineering design that's in the structure from law report, adopted by ordinance. And that does specify the walkways, the paver bands, the curbing, the street trees, everything that goes into the street scape design. The network is what's adopted, I guess, last November, maybe in two thousand eighteen or nineteen.
Are you familiar with the checklist?
Are you familiar with the checklist, with the complete streets resolution checklist, or just be, maybe take a look at it?
So what happens, we actually bound by both contracted and ordinance that apply to those in the adopted ordinance. Um, we have to have a discussion start, potential, and this is that, but whatever the ordinance is at the time that the construction starts, is what we will be obligated to comply with.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, a question, move.
All in favor? Um, public participation portion is now clear. We're now on to minutes, I have the executive meeting minutes and three organizational meeting minutes of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, do I have motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
This is the minutes.
The minutes.
That is standing.
Thank you. We're now on to consent agenda, we're going to do all matters listed on consent agenda, presented collectively to the city council, and will be considered for approval on vote. If matter are considered to be of urgency in nature, there will be no, no discussion of these items. Discussion is desired by one or more council members, that's why you tick your item, and said items should be removed from the consent agenda that is considered subject. On consent agenda, we have resolutions twenty twenty-four seventy-eight through twenty twenty-four eighty-three, do I have motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution, I'm sorry, I'm not taking official resolutions, I have resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-four, resolution approving payment of bills, uh, Mayor Moore, vote no on. P O number twenty-four zero 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 nine one, do I have a motion on resolution approving payment of bills? Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-five, resolution authorizing purchase of stall room for recreation and P A L. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-six, resolution authorizing snowplow repairs needed. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-seven, resolution authorizing payments to holiday designs for the installation of holiday lighting and display in community development block and C D D G funding.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-eight, resolution authorizing annual renewal of all traffic solution software. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-nine, resolution authorizing annual service agreement for local data service coverage. Move it. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety, resolution authorizing annual renewal of W D O U. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-one, resolution authorizing professional services contract for state police accreditation maintenance. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-two, resolution authorizing professional services contract to hacky sack marine team health P C for employment exams and physicals. Questions?
Okay, move it, second.
Move it.
Second, question, wait.
When we talked about that, mostly, most of it was just, did we, I, I forgot to follow up on it.
I did follow up with H R and, um. I think that what we need to do is go through with this, and then we, at the end of the year, we will talk about it, what we need to do.
Okay.
I also had a conversation with Mayor Moore about it.
Okay.
So these have to do with the fiscals.
There's discrepancies on different, different departments having different amounts of money for different physicals.
Right.
Correct, so, so I have a follow up question, and. I had no problem with the amount of money being charged for the police and, uh, fire for physicals, because I think it's well needed. My problem was. The physical for a crossing guard is more for, than a physical for a guy at D P W who's emptying garbage.
Yeah.
So that makes no sense, because, you know, the guy with the bad back is gonna get a two hundred dollar physical and go to suicide, because he always had a bad back. So, truthfully, I can't wait a year to change this, i-if you wanna separate that one, or if you wanna. Table this and get us new numbers for the next meeting, I, I'm open to either one, I mean, it just makes no sense to me that a crossing guard physical costs three hundred fifty dollars. But somebody's gonna live fifty to sixty pounds constantly all day long, the physical's two hundred dollars, so basically, it's, and again, I don't wanna always try to save money here, I'm just saying. It's money well spent to give a good physical to make sure people are not hurt before they come to the city and sue us for a pre-existing injury.
Understood.
Are you gonna do a motion table?
Yes.
Is, is that, is that best for you?
Yes, please, that, that would be good, so I could, I could look into it.
Right, and we can, we can string this out, have this back to the next agenda.
Let's help out there.
Okay, so we make a motion?
Yeah, if that's your contention, we need a motion and a second to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
A second.
Thank you.
I have no problem having this back to the next agenda.
Roll call, vote on table, Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-two has been tabled to the February fourteenth meeting. Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-three, resolution authorizing professional services contract, T N M associates for licensed site renovation professional services, S L R P. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-four, resolution entering to a memory of the agreement with Esberry Park Housing Authority for provisions of fiber optic network repair services. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-five, resolution authorizing contract to a laying communication team for fiber optic repairs needed. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-six, resolution authorizing city of Esberry Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate electric scooter share program within the city. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-seven, resolution authorizing city of Esberry Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate various concessions within the city. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-eight, resolution authorizing the funding of coastal, two coastal habitat for humanity, the administering of the home repair renovation program with community development block brand C D D G funding. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-five, resolution on the matters of the council, say Esberry Park to enter into a stock loan recognition agreement. With N E G financing one L L C as a lender for Somerset Esberry Park urban renewal L L C in connection with the development of property located at block forty one oh five, block one point zero one. Move it. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four ninety-nine, resolution amending, resolution twenty twenty-three two eighty-one, approving twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four alcohol beverage control license. For A P serving property holdings, L L C doing businesses as convention hall concession, beach bar, in the city of Esberry Park, County Moth, New Jersey, certain, who's that? Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four one hundred, resolution celebrating the month of February, National Black History Month. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes.
Councilmember Chapman. Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four one oh one, resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of playground equipment for the second avenue beach front area. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four one oh two, resolution appointing the term of art of Brianer V C to serve as special counsel for the city to finish out certain pending bond and or redevelopment. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
I have a question.
Okay.
May I ask?
Got it.
So this here, uh, move it, just to complete current business, and then no longer?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, roll call, Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to ordinance.
Wait a second, we're missing a resolution towards appointments to.
Yeah, we were gonna do two appointments to rent control. I haven't, I have an appointment on consent for A P T, we have nothing for rent, rent control.
Do you have names?
Yeah, yeah, I do, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna score, but I will say their names. And the reason we're doing it is because we're. Okay, I make a motion to appoint Jill. Actually, the term needs, I don't know, the term needs.
It could be as to their terms, if you can't find it now.
What's your?
It said, if you can't find it now, we can just.
Well, there are set terms, um, within the ordinance, so it's a regular member and alternate.
It was two regular members.
And I remember there are specific designations for some of the members, you have landlords, tenants.
Kathy Bingham, and you know what, Lisa, it's in my, it's in my drafts, it's in my docs to you. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Ordinings. Uh, Jill O C C, I'm gonna spell it, uh, let me do the one that I can spell, Kathy Bingham, B I N G A M.
And Kathy's a property owner, right?
Kathy, Kathy's a property owner, and then Jill, and then I'm gonna send you this email, please, so we can.
Can't sell it anymore.
No, I can't sell it, I'm.
Occupant.
And she is a, and she's a.
Right there.
So Jill is gonna be alternate, alternate, yeah. And then I'm gonna spell Jill's last name. I, I got it. You'd O C C, okay. And then, um, so I'm sending you the email that I thought I sent you. Okay. Um, so we have an additional resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four one oh three, it's gonna be a resolution appointing members to the rent leveling board. Uh, the appointees are Kathy Bingham as a property owner with a term to expire.